Thank you. It is now 7:01 and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the Regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, September 27, 2021. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Karubis.
Here.
Ms. Fazdik.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Demming, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our next Board of Education meeting will be held on October 18, 2021. And we, tonight, we are going to have a budget hearing that has to start at precisely 7:05. So we have about three minutes. So we're going to have some board salutes. So, Mr. Rising.
The Board salutes eight District 204 schools that have earned the inaugural first-of-its-kind Thrive Award by GreatSchools.org. The data-driven award is given to schools that compete, complete, and score favorably on the Illinois State Board of Education's annual five-essential survey, completed by students and staff at the state's public schools. The schools recognized are Clough Middle School, Gregory Middle School, Hill Middle School, Skullon Middle School, and Still Middle Schools, and Matia Valley High School, Niqua Valley High School, and Wobanzie Valley High Schools. The award celebrates schools in Illinois that provide positive, supporting learning environments. Four hundred and fifty-two public schools in Illinois earned this honor, and we were honored to have eight of them. Congratulations to all.
Ms. Jane.
The Board salutes Niqua Valley senior Amulia Jana Lagada, who was chosen to serve on the Illinois State Board of Education's 2021 to '22 Student Advisory Council. Amulia will serve as a student advisor and provide a unique perspective to help ISBE develop and implement important policy decisions. She is one of thirteen new members from across the state selected to serve on the council, so congratulations, Amulia.
Ms. Grover. The Board salutes the 2022 National Merit semifinalists. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced sixty-one District 204 students as semifinalists in the 67th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Matia Valley had nineteen students, Niqua Valley had twenty-nine students, and Wobanzie Valley had thirteen students identified as semifinalists. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for more than 7,500 National Merit Scholarships, worth more than $30 million that will be offered next spring. Merit scholars are selected based on their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Congratulations to all these students and good luck as the scholarship competition moves forward.
Okay, we have one minute to wait for our budget hearing. We have no public comment on the budget.
All right, are we at 7:05? All right. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight is the final step in adopting the legal budget for the 2021-2022 school year. I presented the tentative budget at the August 23 Board of Education meeting. The tentative budget was a natural extension of the forecasts and budget presentations made at the February 8, April 26, and June 14 Board meetings. Consistent with the requirements of the Illinois State Board of Education, the budget was posted on the district's website for over thirty days, and a public notice was posted in both the Naperville Sun and Daily Herald newspapers. The business office received no public feedback on the budget. As such, tonight's budget is presented with no changes from the tentative budget presented last month. The school district budget is a year-round process led by the business office but dependent on feedback and work of leaders throughout the district. I want to thank the Board of Education and district administration for their support throughout the budget process. Tonight's brief presentation will be a summary of the '21-'22 budget and review items previously covered at the February, April, June, and August Board meetings. So tonight, we will cover the budget goals and priorities, the operating funds budget, the non-operating funds budget, and finally, the final steps to this budget adoption. As presented last month, our number-one goal with the 2022 budget was to obtain the State Board of Education's recognition status. This is district goal number three for the 2021-2022 school year. We are also prioritizing supporting a full return to in-person learning, ensuring an efficient use of taxpayer resources, using federal resources to support COVID-19 protocols and address learning loss, to address capital needs and deferred maintenance, and finally, to oversee effective internal controls and maintain compliance with the numerous state and federal requirements. Presented here is the 2022 operating budget by fund. As mentioned last month, we have six operating funds that support the day-to-day operations of the school district. This has no changes from the tentative budget presented last month. I will briefly highlight, we are presenting a budget that has a slight surplus of about $505,000 and tracks to have an ending fund balance as a percentage of revenues of about 35.6%. These two are the biggest indicators to ensure we obtain recognition status for the '21-'22 school year. Just want to cover the history and some trends over the past several years of our budget. As you can see here, this shows budgeted revenues compared to budgeted expenditures starting with the 2018 school year. The district has a history of passing balanced budgets. Over the past five years, we've also been able to increase our operating expenditures by approximately $53 billion. This is about a 3.9% average increase. The source of this increase is primarily increases in the Consumer Price Index, which allow us to increase our property tax levy annually, but also support increases in our expenditures that tie and track pretty closely with the Consumer Price Index. We also saw a one-time but recurring increase in state revenue from the 2018 to 2019 school year. That was with the adoption of the evidence-based funding formula. We currently see a one-time but potentially non-recurring increase in federal resources between the '21 and '22 school year. That's why, as we've presented at the past month's meetings, we are trying to use our federal resources widely and use them fairly evenly over the next three fiscal years, knowing that they are potentially a non-recurring source of revenue. Just showing here shows those revenue trends by major revenue source. And again, this reiterates that we saw an increase in state funding between '18 and '19. That's that gray box there. And that represents '18 when we budgeted for general state aid compared to '29 when we were budgeting for the evidence-based funding formula. And then again, as you could see in '21 to '22, even though it's still one of the smaller bars, we have seen a significant increase in federal revenues for the current school Moving on to expenses, this is a similar five-year analysis of our expenditures by funds, and you'll see that the overwhelming largest support, or largest area of expenditures in our operating expenditures through the education fund. So these are all expenditures that support our day-to-day programming in our schools. This includes regular education, special education, our intermurals and extracurricular activities, the supporting services in our schools, as well as building administration and other day-to-day services. Again, the other remaining funds of, for the operating funds of the district are the operations and maintenance fund, transportation, our IMRF and Social Security Fund, and then our TORD immunity fund. These all make up much smaller portions of our total budget. Here you'll see a summary of expenditures by object, and you'll see 76% of our budget is spent on salaries and benefits, 63% on salaries, and approximately 13% on benefits. This is significant because in the 2021-22 school year, we are trying to increase our FTE and have budgeted for a 27.8 FTE increase from the last year. The priority in these increased FTE is to reduce K through two class sizes, additional nursing staff, as well as district-wide math, social-emotional learning, and literacy coordinators. I do want to put in a plug that I think we put in every board meeting. We still do have positions available for people who are ready and willing to assist our schools. And I will also mention that even though we have some vacancies, that doesn't necessarily decrease what we're budgeting in these areas. A lot of times when we have vacancies, that just means that those positions have to be covered by subs, internal substitutes, or other positions in the district. And so we don't necessarily see a net decrease in expenditures when we have some of those vacancies. And that's, you know, honestly, that's why we want to make sure we're able to fill these positions, because it's work that's currently being done and really taxing a lot of our current staff who are already doing a great job focusing on their assigned duties and now have a little extra work to do. So again, that's my plug for tonight. I'm sure other members will mention it tonight as well. Briefly, we showed a comparable district analysis, really at several presentations during this budget cycle. But again, we'll reiterate that of our eight comparable districts, these are all unit-school districts with extremely high levels of academic performance, we continue to be the lowest in operating expense per pupil, 18% below the state average as well. Also, since our last presentation, the 2022 evidence-based funding percentages have come out, and not surprisingly, we also have the lowest evidence-based funding percentage at 83%. As you can see, all but one of our other peer districts has over 100% of the resources they need to provide a high-quality education, while we are providing that same or better education with 83% of the resources needed. I'll mention that when the evidence-based funding formula started, we were at 80%, so we are starting to tick up slightly on this percentage. But when you really look at the numbers and dig into the data, that's more a result of our enrollment decreasing, and it's really less a result of increased state revenue year-over-year, after, again, that first increase we saw between fiscal year '18 and '19's budget. Moving on to the non-operating budget, just presented here is the bond and interest fund budget for the '21-'22 school year. I did just want to reiterate some points that came up during questions during last month's tentative budget presentation. So our bond and interest fund is really what we, it's really used to pay the bonds that were issued as the district saw extreme growth in capital throughout the 1990s and early 2000s. The district was pretty consistent in that we issued 20-year bonds when we funded new school construction. So our last-year debt service payments of fiscal year 2027 really corresponds with the opening date of Matea Valley High School, which was the last of our buildings that was completed during that building phase. Unlike home mortgages or some other forms of debt, we're really restricted on when we're able to restructure or refinance our debt. We get one opportunity generally, and that's about halfway through that 20-year debt cycle. And we have taken advantage of every opportunity to reduce the debt service payments. We have an average interest rate on these remaining payments of 4.1%, which, when you think that when issued, these payments were a 20-year bond, 4.1% is really a very good interest rate, and it speaks to the, first of all, the foresight by the people who issued that debt to keep that term at 20 years as opposed to going out longer. When we did refinance, we kept that 20-year term as well so that we could keep that interest rate lower, and the underlying credit quality of the district's debt has stayed at AA status that whole time as well. The last non-operating fund for the district is our capital fund. And again, this is a fund that really has no recurring funding source. So we've built up a pretty significant balance, but do not see the opportunity to fund that additionally over the next several years, so we begin to spend this balance down. For the 2022 school year, we're budgeting $9 million of capital expenditures coming out of this capital fund. Myself and Todd DePaul are currently scheduled to present at the 2021, December 2021 Board of Education meeting with our annual facility update. We expect that presentation to be a little more comprehensive than it's been over the last several years. As we're coming out of the pandemic, I think it's the right time to really put in front of the Board a more comprehensive multi-year capital plan, and we'll be looking to do that in December. So finally, the final steps here for the adoption of the budget is to approve the budget. That's a formal approval by the Board that'll take place later in tonight's agenda. Once approved, I will complete the required filings with both our counties, the State Board of Education, our Regional Office of Education. Those are required to be completed by September 30. And then, as I mentioned at the first slide, this really is an annual process, and so I just wanted to put up the next times over the next several months where myself and my team will be in front of you on other budget items. So that really starts in November, when we'll be presenting a completed '21 audit report. In November and December, we will be presenting the 2021 property tax levy that, similar to a budget, is required to be presented and then available on public display for 30 days. As previously mentioned, we'll be doing an annual facilities update currently scheduled for December, and then we'll start the process all over again in February 2022 with our initial five-year forecast as we prepare for the '22-'23 school year. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I am available if there are any questions.
Next, we move that the Board of Education close the public hearing. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Susan Demming, I move that we close. Susan Demming, I move that we close the public hearing regarding '21-'22 budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. Thank you, Matt, to your team and for aligning to our district goals of being fiscally responsible and following the direction of the Board. You know, the fact of the matter is, is we're the second-highest rated K-12 school district in the state of Illinois, I think 56th top-rated school district in the nation, and we are significantly less funded than every single district that ranks above us in Illinois from the local and the state level. And yet, look at where we are, what we offer our students, the wonderful staff we have, and the programs we can offer. And that's without going into deficit. And a lot of that thanks goes to this Board and to your department, so I'd like to just thank you for making sure that we stay fiscally responsible for our residents and their property taxes. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Just a couple comments. We're adopting this budget for 2021-2022 in September for a fiscal year that started in July because of the variability of the state payments. Other districts might pass their budgets earlier in the year, some districts might do so later, and the timing is largely a factor of the district's dependence on those state payments. We fly a $378 million budget that has approximately $45 million in state payments, and it only has an approximate half-a-million-dollar excess. So you can see how tight it is. I think it's also important to note that the budget can be amended. If there's great variance, if the state misses a payment, we might have to come back and take a look at the budget to amend it. And also, a point that I have harped on a lot is that it's a substantially balanced budget, but it also has an unstated deficit for the capital needs and the deferred maintenance. I'm glad we're going to be addressing that in future meetings, and it's not uncommon for budgets to have those unstated deficits, and we've acknowledged that deficit in the past, and we need to work on it. Thanks.
I'll just quickly comment if we, this, the Board, it's been several years, but the Board of Education has passed amended budgets in the past where appropriate. That does follow a similar process to the adoption of the legal budget. So it is a tentative amended budget with a 30-day public posting period followed by the Board approving that amended budget.
And, Matt, just pointing to Mr. Karubis's point regarding our deficit on the capital side, we're, it's worth noting, am I correct, it's about, we're deficit of about $2 million of what's recommended for us to be able to spend capitally?
What we are proposing for spend this year compared to what we're estimating that that annual spend would be, it's about $2 million increase. I think we presented last month that the total deficit's probably about $40 million, but it, at this time, and part of what we'll cover in December is those really are some estimates. And we're hoping during the, this spring and into next summer, really... (music playing) All right. We may be adding new microphones and speakers to the deficit. We're looking at trying to get a better handle on what that number is and making that a firmer estimate, and then, and really aligning that with the work we're doing right now with our boundary study, as well as the work we're going to be doing in the spring and summer with the strategic plan.
And I just want to acknowledge the fact that you and your team, all the teams have always been sure to ensure that although we operate at a deficit of what's recommended we spend, you ensure that our buildings and our schools are safe and that those definitive things that need to be taken care of are always taken care of. And I just had one quick question, and I, on, I don't remember whether we talked about this, but does it, did our local, let's see, other, on Slide 6, where we had, oh, you know what? I'm good. That's evidence-based funding. I'm good.
Okay.
So that deleted, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? I think, as you've heard, maintenance and the fact that we have kind of stolen from that pot for a few, many years, actually, and done the minimum amount of maintenance because of our budget constraints continues to be something that worries the Board and something that we need to, in the future, look at remedying. Also echoing the comments from Mr. Rising, it is amazing what we do with the money that we have, and thank you for keeping us on track and in recognition status. So thank you. So with that, Jeannie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Karubis.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Sorry.
Yes.
The motion passes. Our next topic is a report from our student representative by Lisa Nettucci from Niqua Valley.
Welcome.
Hey, Lisa.
Hello.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry, my hands are shaking a little bit.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lisa Nettucci. I'm Niqua Valley's school board representative, and it is my pleasure to represent Niqua for you all here tonight. Last week, Niqua Valley celebrated its annual Spirit Week to build enthusiasm for the homecoming dance. Students participated in Pajama Day, Class Color Day, Team Day, Flannel Day, and, of course, Blue and Gold Day. It was really great to see everyone getting back into the swing of things, and the week has been widely considered to be a great success. In addition, on Tuesday, the 21st, Niqua students got the chance to witness Niqua Knows It Can Dance, a school-wide dancing competition where students from groups with clubs, teams, and their friends. Every team put on a fantastic performance, but ultimately, the peer partners won most spirited, while a group of seniors who called themselves the Senior Citizens took home the win. Congratulations to all of the participants. You definitely can dance. Continuing with our Spirit Week events, on Thursday, the 23rd, over 200 students participated in Niqua Olympics, an event during which teams of 10 to 12 students competed in a series of challenges. Congratulations to the junior varsity soccer team for beating marching band in a tumultuous game of tug-of-war and winning free homecoming tickets. Students also got the chance to decorate windows around the school in order to show their club pride. It was amazing to see everyone working hard to represent their club. On Friday, September 24, Wildcats were able to attend the pep rally in order to get everyone excited for the homecoming game against Naperville Central. We celebrated the achievements of our sports teams, witnessed great performances from our cheerleaders, dance team, and orgasms, watched relay races and tug-of-war contests, and got to see Willie the Wildcat's awe-inspiring dance moves, thanks to both the administrators and students who put in hard work to motivate us. Speaking of the homecoming game, the Niqua Valley football team took home the win against the Redhawks after a tense game that was 0 to 0 until the fourth quarter and led to double overtime. With the final score being 20 to 17, we could not be more proud of our team. To wrap up our Spirit Week, Wildcats attended an outdoor Hollywood Nights-themed homecoming dance. Students took pictures, ate Kona ice, and danced the night away. A very special thank you to our Special Events Committee, student council representatives and administrators, and our custodians. This unforgettable night couldn't have been possible without your continued support and hard work. Currently, Niqua students are banding together to collect gently-used winter accessories such as hats, scarves, and gloves for families in our community. Collection ends on October 5, and it is so inspiring to see everyone working together for a great cause. As students return to school, there are a myriad of guidelines set in order to keep us safe. Masks are mandatory during school hours, as well as seating charts in order to help with contact tracing. We've been maintaining social distancing during lunch, and everyone is working hard to keep everyone in our community happy and healthy. Furthermore, Niqua's senior advisory program is up and running smoothly. Fifty-two Niqua role models are chosen each year to meet with their assigned group of freshmen three times a week to do team-building activities, teach lessons about mental and emotional health, and give genuine advice to the class of 2026. Thanks so much for all of your hard work, seniors. Many of Niqua's nearly 60 active clubs have had their first meetings with an increased attendance compared to the last few years. Activities such as Anime Club, the Black Student Alliance, Girls in STEM, Row Kappa, and Science Olympiad have begun to meet. I know every Wildcat is looking forward to making new friends, learning, and making an impact in their community. Niqua's theater program performed their improv show on September 16 and 17, and it was a hit. Now, they're working hard to put their annual children's show, which is Tinker Bell this year. We hope to see you on October 8 and 9 for a magical time. Fall sports have begun, and Niqua athletes are already rising above the rest. Congrats to the girls' golf team, who recently became DVC champions, and our undefeated football team. Good luck to all of our fall sports as they advance into the season. Additionally, Niqua's news production team, Wildcat Weekly, starts its 21st year of bringing Niqua its most important news. Thanks so much to everyone who's a part of it. Finally, Niqua academics have also been thriving, as we had 58 National Merit-Commed Scholars and 29 semifinalists. We can't wait to see what else you'll achieve. It's been a pleasure speaking to you all tonight. Thank you for listening. Have a great night, and as always, go Wildcats.
Thank you very much. Okay. It is now time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, we ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep your comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Our first speaker is Jasti Babu.
Yep. Watch your step.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to the members of the school board, school administration. I thank you guys for your service, and good evening to my fellow citizens. I'm a resident of Mission Oaks neighborhood in Naperville. We are a Welsh Niqua community. Oaks neighborhood in Naperville. We are a Welsh Niqua community. I'm here to express my concern about the boundary exercise that's underway. It is breaking our community, and we have many concerns. I want to focus on safety. The current school boundaries were developed a decade ago with major focus on student safety. For example, avoid crossing Route 59. Safety does not seem to be a consideration during the current exercise. As things stand right now, students from, students from Sam or all of my community will be crossing Route 59 twice a day. They'll be crossing a set of railroad tracks. They'll be traversing major traffic intersections. All this to get to Still and Wabonzi schools, when they can go to the local Welsh and Niqua schools in a matter of minutes. And compound this with communities from the other side of Route 59 that will be traversing to Niqua Valley school. No rationale can justify ignoring safety concerns involved. So my humble request to you all is to ensure that our community is not put at risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Shantz.
Good evening, Dr. Tally. Good evening, School Board of Education. I'm gonna ask about the STEM coordinator today. One of the parents from the STEM school reached out to you, Dr. Tally, and heard that there is a STEM coordinator. And since we've been looking at the website for postings and kind of didn't see it, we were wondering like when that was, when it was posted and where. And wanted to ask if it's even an official position, because looking at the person's background, she's currently doing something else. So we were wondering if she's leaving that post and becoming the STEM coordinator full-time. We would have wished if there was, there was some communication. There are tons of emails like regarding the boundaries, but we hadn't seen anything in regards to that, and we found that that's really important. And it, we think it can be because it's just 50 kids concerned, because the coordinator's job is to bring that education to every kid in the district, right? That was the premise. We'd also like to know what her qualifications are and experience to, that she brings to the table overall. And what is the job description that the district developed? Like what is the specific objective of the role? So where is it gonna lead? That's, I'm a little bit skeptical because of all that went down in the last school year. And another question I had was when are you going to share the specific plan in regards to what happens with the kids that will have to return to their home schools by the end of this school year? How are they continuing to get their project arrow? Or how are they gonna plug in into Project Lead the Way? Or in general? Because in my son's instance, he has to go back to Fisher for one year to then only go to Wabonzi the next year, which is gonna be a pretty big disruption. You promised them the same education, and how are you going to ensure that that's fulfilled? One thing I heard earlier is that Graham School was supposed to get some STEM classrooms but is potentially being threatened to be closed, which then would put all the elementary schools at capacity, and then that would go directly against the goal of bringing more STEM to the district, because those STEM classrooms wouldn't be available in that case. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Helen Liu.
Good evening. My name is Helen Liu, and I come from the current Welsh Niqua community. There are 14 subdivisions, over 3,100 household in the big family. People usually call me Coach Helen because I've been a volunteer coach for math count team in Skala Middle School for nine years. For that reason, I have known many kids, many students, many families in the community. First, I would like to thank Dr. Tally, Mr. Chapley, and other officials, of course, Board of Education, for reading and replying our tons of emails in the past weeks. And thank you for understanding our concerns and modifying the old Concept 3. Thank you for moving the whole Welsh Niqua family back to Niqua Valley High School. We really appreciate that. And for the exactly same reason, may I ask you guys, please, consider Concept 1, modify one piece in Concept 1, which moves north of 87th Street of current Welsh Niqua community to Over Elementary School, Steel Elementary, uh, Steel Middle School, and Wabonzi Valley High School. So this move will have our students to cross the big busy road unnecessarily. Somebody already talked about the safety, potential safety issues, and I would like to focus on the walkability. So our 14 subdivisions are built around Welch Elementary School. Welch Elementary School like the center of the whole big community, and we're only one street away from 95th Street. So basically, our community is a community of workers and bicyclers. Most of the students will walk to their schools when the weather permitted. And it's not uncommon to see Niqua students run through our neighborhood for their physical education class. So our furthest house in the community from Welch Elementary School is .8 miles, and for, from Niqua School will be 1.8 miles. Separating this community fully or partially violates the boundary community guiding principle of walkability. And we think there's no gain to be secured by busing those students four, five miles to a school that not part of their community. Also, I'm a statistician, I'm a modular, so based on ISP data provided from the presentation they shared online, we think there's capacity...
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next speaker. The next speaker is Samrat Sahar.
Respected Dr. Tally, board members, my, one of my former colleagues mentioned about the safety concerns related to the reboundry initiative, and what I'm trying to do here is trying to present you some facts. I know you guys have very hard decisions to make sure the decisions are unbiased and is working for the, so that the resources are basically equitably distributed against all the students within the district, right? So just to give you some facts, what I'm going to give you is some traffic and, and some safety, road safety, facts from Illinois Department of Transportation and National Safety, National Highway Safety Transportation Administration. So in terms of our layout, you know, we have two counties. Basically, we're talking about the Will County and the DuPage County as part of the district. These two districts happen to be the, has the highest amount of traffic. If you leave the Cook County aside, of the 102 counties that are in the state of Tennessee, these two have the second and third spot right after Cook County. Now you cannot look the Cook County because it has a different type of traffic. It has high, much higher public transport system than, here people have to commute by roads, right? Now, within this, within these counties, basically, if you look into the national highway transportation, they provide you the crash data, right? So in terms of crash also, Will County, DuPage County happens to be the number two and number three spots, right? So these, just to give you some perspective on things, our, right, our neighboring county, Kane County, has half the number of fatal crashes compared to the DuPage County. Lately, the Transportation Safety Board has closely looked into the numbers of serious crashes and fatal crashes specifically at the intersections. Why do we look at intersections? Fifty percent of all serious collisions involving human injury happens at intersections. Twenty percent of all fatal crashes occur at intersections. About 10 years or so ago, there was a study initiated looking at the top 20 most dangerous intersections in the entire state. Illinois, in the entire state of Illinois, right? Of these, one of the top five spots happened to be smack in the middle of our board, or our district, right? So this is the route on, on the Route 59 corridor. And you might ask, well, that was 20 years ago. What about now? Now? I don't have the most recent data from the, what do you call, the geography-specific location, but all trends point to that we have, that the traffic has always, has been an increasing trend. There were more accidents in 2020 than...
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much.
So we would like you to consider this, these considerations. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Yulane Chen.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Dear Indian Prairie School District 204 Board of Education. First, let me introduce myself. My name is Yulane Chen. I have been a Mission Oaks resident for 20 years. The purpose I'm here is try to persuade Board of Education to consider, to modify Concept 1, which came from 204 reboundry workshop on September 22nd. I have been kind of a little bit upset here in Concept Number 1, which cut Mission Oaks and also Crosswinds and Arrow Estate of Welch community. I lived here for 20 years, raised the children, and made friends and good neighbors together with people living Stillwater, Woodlake, and Witcher. And right now, we have to separate. We've been contributing to community, volunteering in public services, and paying our taxes. My kids, my money all go to Welch Niqua Valley community. This place is also full of good memory for me because we live with each other together. Let me kind of rewind back, like 20 years ago. When I first arrived Mission Oaks, it's almost like a bare land. We're like a first generation of immigrants, but we decided to settle in. We pour our hearts on this land, nurture and develop the community. Now this place is getting better and nicer. And also, I'd like to point out a fact is current Welch and Niqua Valley is under utilization. Why cut us off? This capacity is 70%, right? And a three community, I just mentioned subdivision, sorry, is only have like about 100 elementary students and about 100 high school students. So we are not a lot, we're small, middle-income communities. Then what? Now we were asked to leave, kind of sad. It doesn't kind of sound right to me. Sorry. And I raise another question. Why don't those new house builders and owners to build and develop their own communities and schools? At the end, I want to restate or beg Mission Oaks not to be separate from Welch Niqua Valley because we built together, grew up together, and we are really the one. Thank you.
The next speaker is Vijay Dara.
Hi. My name is Vijay Dara. I live in a subdivision called Mission Oaks. It is north of 87th Street between Route 59 and Book Road. We are a very small community and very close to Niqua Valley and Welch Elementary, and we are at a walkable distance from both these schools. Today, I'm here to express some concerns about the proposed boundary changes by IPSD, and I know IPSD has been, committee and board have been diligently working on the boundary changes for past few months, and currently, they narrowed down to two concepts, Concept 1 and Concept 3. Concept 3 is better now. Thanks to the board and committee for listening to our concerns and updating Concept 3, and Concept 3 addresses all our concerns, but Concept 1 still has some work to do. We are mainly concerned about the commute to the Welch and Niqua. Currently, one-way trip to Niqua takes just five minutes by car, whereas to Wabonzi, it takes anywhere between 20 and 30 minutes. To put it in perspective, my kid has both after and before-school activities, and if I have to drop and pick up my kid, to Niqua, it will take just 10 minutes round trip for that day, whereas to Wabonzi High School, it will take anywhere between 80 to 100 minutes. And parents have to spend double the amount of time because they have to drop and come back home. So this puts tremendous strain on our kids, especially they will have very less time to sleep. They have to go late to bed and wake up early, and they won't have enough time to do their homeworks, and they will be sleep deprived. And this ultimately puts a lot of strain on them, and they won't have enough strength or focus to focus on their high school work, and it will negatively impact their future and career. So my request to the board is to continue to listen to our concerns and update Concept 3 in the same way, sorry, Concept 1 in the same way Concept 3 was updated. Hopefully, our concerns will be listened and updated accordingly. Thank you very much to board and committee. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Seth Andres.
Hello. Respected Indian Prairie School Board, I am here to express my concern about the boundary discussion, and namely Concept 1. My name is Seth Andres. I've lived in District 204 for about seven years. My wife grew up in District 204. She went, she's an early Niqua Valley alumni. We moved from the Georgetown subdivision, right next to Wabonzi, to Mission Oaks, namely to go to Welch in Niqua Valley. When we moved into Mission Oaks, we found an open and inviting community. Kids playing in the front yards or on the local playground. As some of the members of the boards know, there is no real separation between these subdivisions. Stillwater, Crosswinds, Mission Oaks, Arrow Estate subdivisions, we're all just a peninsula heading straight towards Welch in Niqua Valley. We're walled off by the prairie, by the golf course, and by 59. We're only feed into the Welch and Niqua community. My son's best friend lives in the Stillwater community, and with Concept 1, we discovered that they would be going to separate schools. Now, kids who live less than a five-minute walking distance would be going to separate schools. Backyard neighbors would be going to separate schools. We're an organically formed community with a very diverse socioeconomic background. A boundary decision that would separate my son from his friend and to break apart our community would not be in the spirit of good urban planning. In regards to Concept 1, we urge you to retain the wholeness of this community and to let us all continue to attend our Welch Elementary and our Niqua Valley High School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next name looks like Kalib Wilson?
Celeste.
Celeste. Oh, okay.
I have a name.
It's, it's difficult to read. It's difficult to read. No, we have to have it on.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Celeste Wilson. I have been a resident of Naperville for the last twenty-two years. I live in the townhomes at Crosswinds in Mission Oaks. So, there's two things I want to talk about tonight. One is specifically around, my son has an IEP, so there's students that have the IEPs and the five oh fours, as well as I want to talk about the social, socioeconomic injustice of Crosswinds, considering we are affordable housing, and that we would have to move to Wobonzi. Got him out of breath for some reason. So, my son's had an IEP since he was five years old. He had an, he had IEPs for speech, for behavior, for occupational therapy. He's continued to have IEPs, and he's a sophomore at Nikwa right now. He has severe ADHD, so for people that have kids that have ADHD, he's on a scale of about a nine out of a ten. So, things like change are very, very, very difficult for these kids. Sleep deprivation is an issue. Managing his medicine is an issue, because it has an immediate effect. So, if he took his medicine, it wouldn't last throughout the entire day of school. So, managing that medicine for people that have kids that have these conditions is very, very, very difficult. He lacks cognitive flexibility, so hyperactivity, focus, having to sit on a bus for way longer, all these things would terribly impact him in a negative way if we did that. And then, the other part of what I wanted to talk about was just, Crosswinds, we are considered affordable housing. We are the townhomes in the area of Naperville. A tremendous amount of the people that have lived in this community are from, I know people from Lithuania, Kosovo, Poland, Germany. People move specifically to Crosswinds, so they could afford to go to Nikwa. So, I hope that, I feel like it would be sinful if we did separate the Welch community and have certain groups go to Wobonzi instead of Nikwa. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Simon Yuan.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and the board. I can tell some of our speakers are nervous when our board number, board members should be the ones who are nervous, why so, so many people here? And what's something wrong? But anyway, thanks. My topic today is about the potential race discrimination on our Asian community in two oh four. Two years ago, around the same, same time, my son come home and crying. Our kids in the school pushed him and say some bad racist words to him. I don't want to repeat those words. I don't know how that little case learned the bad words from. So, teachers, principal, and I, and my family, we worked together to help my son to go through that bad time. We never mention it anymore, and he also never wants to talk about it. I know that our Mission Oak community has a high Asian population. I also know that we are getting cut out with the new rezoning. I wish it not so, but my mind tell me it might be racial marginalization. You guys may think the race discrimination is far away, but it did happen to us. I guess somebody still remember the white pride sign last summer near the Welch school? That's near our school. So, back to the, uh, boundary change. Actually, we don't want to get our kids involved in this early stage, but last week, my kids asked me, Dad, why can't we stay in Welch and Nikwa? I like Nikwa. I want to see Jessica's picture in the gym. Jessica is my daughter. She played the basketball for Nikwa for four years, varsity team. And her brothers show up to support her and the team through all the, through all the seasons. Go Nikwa, go Wildcat, they like Nikwa. They have a close bond with Nikwa. Now, I can't answer the question. How can I answer it? Are we too far from Nikwa? No. So, what's it? Our kids not good enough for the Nikwa? Somebody said, oh, it's, it's not the right, right distance issue, it's issue of racial discrimination. See how many Asian people they are in our-
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Prasanna Madrasani.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, District two oh four, every, including Dr. Tally and, you know, all the board members and Mr. Shipley. It's a great opportunity. Actually, this reboundary process, I've never been a part of this, and, you know, it has brought our community together. That is one positive thing. I met a lot of people, and it's really good to be a part of these discussions and everything. And I would like to thank everybody for considering about the Concept Three. I'm from Mission Oaks subdivision. I would say more or less, you know, I would talk myself as a Welch community, right? So, basically, I have two kids. Both of them are very outgoing, and they like to participate in the pre and, you know, post-educational activities. So, right now, when I look at the stuff, right, I mean, my older one, she's a junior at Nikwa, and she goes to, you know, she challenges herself with AP and everything. I always tell her that, you know, your mental state is more important than anything else. I don't care about, like, you know, you taking like ten APs and, you know, deprive your sleep and then end up into a lot of stuff. Recently, last year, one of my friends, my daughter's friend's sister, she was a Nikwa alumni, and unfortunately, she passed away last year during the COVID time, and we came to know the reason about it, that, you know, because of the stress level she had and everything, and she got sleep deprived and, you know, because of, she was a UIUC computer science student, and she had a bright future ahead. She was already selected into Facebook. The reason for that is because of her sleep deprivation. She got so used to that sleep, not going to sleep, and she was kind of more on sleeping pulse. She was trying to wean out of that, but unfortunately, the stress and everything did not, and it was an accidental overdose of sleeping pulse. I look at this, my daughter takes AP Chem right now, and their classes start like half an hour before the actual school time. For that reason, I have to drop her, and this is actually like, you know, because it's only five minutes away, I'm able to do it. And she loves the music program. I believe every school in IPST is really good. I really always look at the holistic approach of the kids' development, not just education like math, science, and English. No. So, her going away, my younger one is also very good. She likes to attend the music, right? If this move, whole thing moves to Wobonzi, it kind of gets challenged. Now, we have to think about all these kind of stuff. My older one is in marching band. She comes home at five o'clock. It gets over at four fifty, within ten minutes, she's at home. Now, if I, if we go to Wobonzi, my younger one will definitely be a part of this, so it will be a problem.
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Manush Knestha.
Greetings, IPST two oh four members. Appreciate the kind of work you guys are doing. Amazing. I'm a proud Naperville resident. Moved to Naperville about six, seven years or so, and the kind of work you're doing is amazing. So, why we are here? We are here so as to solve the over-capacity issue. The over-capacity issue can be solved by breaking the communities, putting the life risk of all the kids, or, you know, the commute time. So, I don't think so that over-capacity can be resolved by doing all these kind of things, you know? So, the safety of our kids, as everybody said that, that, you know, while our kids can bike towards Nikwa or, or Welch for like point seven miles or one miles, why would our kids go? It doesn't make any sense to, they could go to Wobonzi or still middle schools, because that will add up more time, about forty minutes or so, where they can go within a ten minutes or so. So, it's my humble request to you all to consider this re-change on the Concept Eight. Until last week, I was thinking that why I am the north of ninety-fifth, but today, I'm thinking why I am north of eighty-seven. So, it seems like board is taking the baby steps, moving closer towards Mission Oaks, to our communities, you know? It's really my humble request, please consider, you know, us as the together, because tigers are wild cats, and I'm proud of that community. So, thank you so much for all the work, and thank you all.
The next speaker is Kashi Bakaria. Please make sure to, you don't mention students' names unless it's your own student.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I, my name is Kashi Bakaria. I am a resident of the Mission Oaks subdivision of Naperville. And as you already know, on the map, we are geographically isolated and landlocked on three directions, the west, where we have the Route fifty-nine, on the north, where you have the all-commercial strips of Costco and Lowe's and Home Depot, and on the east, where you have the Spring Brook Prairie, which is like a huge block that's separating us from the next community on the other side. The only social connection that we have is on our south side, with our friends in Stillwater. I am very concerned right now about our neighborhood schools being taken away from us and other much further down, probably more influential, more wealthier subdivisions, being put in our place, in our schools, and us being pushed out and scattered and broken down right through the middle of our communities, and being put in three different directions for elementary, middle, and high schools. More so, this is right through our subdivisions and like splitting our kids from their friends, from streets across, from homes across the street. I take my daughter to Skullen Middle School, and I pick her up three days in a week from three after-school programs that she attends. And every single day, when I come back, because, you know, I come back from the Rolling Ridge Road, because it's a one-way during the rush hour, during the school pickup hours, you have to like, it's very, very scary, and you need to be very careful when merging back on Route fifty-nine. My wife is too scared, she doesn't even venture out to pick her up. So, now, you are asking us to go in three, on three different major highways, Route fifty-nine for Skullen or Still, for seventy-fifth street for going towards Ovan, and Route fifty-nine Ogden and Eola for going to Wobonzi. Every single day, we have to pick up or drop off our kids from before-school or after-school programs. This two, like a five mile in each way, in three different directions, like in south for our element, our middle school, in our west for the high school, and the east for elementary school. And this will simply discourage parents like us to, from enrolling our kids to after-school programs, deny them the opportunity, because commuting in three different directions is very stressful on major highways during rush hours, and not every parent can do it, especially if you have kids in two different schools, running from east to west to south, every single time is, is very, very stressful. I humbly request you to please reconsider your options for our Mission Oaks neighborhood, and put our kids where they belong, which is Welch Elementary, Nikwa Valley High School, and perhaps Gregory Middle School or something that's even closer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Padma.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm, my name is Padma, and I'm, actually, I live in Mission Oaks. Last twenty years, all like neighborhoods, like from Welch to Nikwa. It's never been changed last twenty years. Now, the, now, boundary re-change again came, and in all these kids has grown together. It's not like, you know, now seeing the Concept One, you're breaking up the community, because all these kids went together, they can go by walk or by, they can ride a bike to the school. Welch is just point eight miles away from our, our homes, and Nikwa is just one point five miles away. My concern is Concept One, all the Mission Oaks people will go to Ovan, which is five miles away, which doesn't make any sense to us, like, you know, because you have to sit in the longer drive to go into the Ovans, and Wobonzi is five point five miles, which is Route fifty-nine, Ogden, and seventy-fifth. These are the three major roads kids has to cross. So, lot of seniors and juniors, they can drive to high schools. They just started driving to the school, but if we give the card to them to go to the Wobonzi, crossing the main roads, I don't know the safety issue is the main concern in there. Nikwa is just a small road, twenty-five miles an hour, they can go to Nikwa. Another one is, Nikwa is under-crowded. Actually, existing students should stay in Nikwa and Welch, and you can bring the new home people to the Welch and Nikwa. I don't know why this Concept One, taking out the existing kids who goes to Welch and Nikwa and putting into far away. It doesn't make any sense if I see the Concept One. My humble request, please, please reconsider when you see the Concept One. We are one family in there. We all go to Welch and Nikwa last twenty years. Because of the new community comes, we cannot take the existing ones and, you know, remove that old ones and putting the new ones. Please, my humble request to consider that. Welch to Nikwa. That's all I have today. Thank you.
The next, next speaker is Xiaoyan Sun.
Good evening, respected two oh four school district board members. Dr. Tally, my name is Simon Yuan. I'm a parent of two oh four school district kids, you know? I live in Mission Oaks subdivision. I came here last board meeting as well. As I mentioned, now, I have five kids, all of them graduated from Welch Elementary School. And we, our kids, you know, we, I stayed here for close to twenty years. Our kids have strong bonding with Stillwater, the whole community. They play together in the summertime. My two son, my twin sons, they join the Stillwater Star Z swim team, which is part of Naperville Swim Conference. They win a lot of points for them, so even when time allows, they bike to schools, walk to school a lot of times, and they like running, so along the sky, sky, skyline, which connects the community from Welch, from Mission Oaks to Stillwater to Nikwa. There are a lot of kids running at the PE. So, so I came here, I want to say, you know, we just had the budget discussion, so the transportation is one of the considerations, and reassigning the Mission Oaks in Concept One from Welch to Ovan and then goes to Wobonzi, will causing a lot of logistic issues, as a lot of the parents have addressed. It's also, it's not green. It's going to be, I guess, the additional traffic and the bus, which has a shortage on the drivers, I think that's maybe, you know, make the bad, right now, we have a balanced budget. I know majority, seventy-five percent is on the, on the teachers or salaries, but with the additional bus driver, maybe the five hundred K, we were just tipping from under-budget over the budget, so. The other thing is, 10 years ago, RSP did the data for the, for the, for the studies and now, you know, at current situation, this current feeding system from Welch to Skullon to Nikwa, we all have capacity for all the three schools, you know, we, it's not causing the problem of, of, we all have space.
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Priya Lakani.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, my friends. My name is Priya Lakani and I live in Mission Oaks past 12 years. When I moved, my kids were so small, so little, they used to see all the kids going from biking to the school. It's very close. So moving them from Nikwa to Wabanzie is gonna create lot of chaos, lot of traffic problems. When my husband goes to that station, he used to take the car and in Route 59, there are so much traffic. When the bus goes, the traffic will be more and my kids, I, I feel little concerned about going from Nikwa to Wabanzie. And there are a kids, those who are, my kid is, my daughter is going to Nikwa right now. She is a freshman over there. She joined the clubs thinking that she is gonna continue for all the four years and those clubs are not offered by the Wabanzie. So she's saying, she just told me to put that point that I will not be having, gonna join the clubs over there also. They, due to this pandemic, they already had so much problems with the friendships. They broke the friendship, so many kids are there, those who are not having the friends. They just now making the friends going to school and again, if you move them, you are gonna separate my kid, every kid from their friends. So my concern is, please, 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 don't do that and let them go where they are going. All the subdivisions will be happy to have their schools back. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Tammy Williams.
This is up close and personal. My name's Tammy Williams and as it stands right now, I am a TA at Wabanzie. Thank you. On Wednesday, September 22nd, I submitted my religious exemption to HR. I stated specific reasons as to why I requested the exemption that are personal to me, my faith, and my relationship with God. I prayed to find the right words that would convey my faith and reasons for choosing not to vaccinate or test weekly. At 11:46 that same evening, my response from you came in an email that my application was reviewed and denied. Others received similar emails with approvals but mentioned that they would still have to test. I'm not sure who was checking the boxes, who got approved for the religious exemption and who did not. I did not and I feel like on its face, it's discrimination. On Friday, I received an email from Dr. Lee in all caps in the subject line, Notice of Exclusion. It stated that because I did not comply to testing, starting today, I would be excluded from the district. I would be on unplanned leave effective immediately. I am the same person from 13 months ago, four weeks ago, heck, one week ago. I was welcomed into the building every day to do the job I have come to love with the people and the kids I have come to love. The only difference as of, is as of today, that somehow I am now a danger to be there. There is no difference between me and a vaccinated person in terms of contact, contact, contracting, excuse me, and spreading. Yet I have to test, but they do not. The only difference as of today is that I did not comply. My non-compliance makes me now a danger, a health risk, not a health risk. I cannot go against my conscience, my faith, and test when I am not sick. The direction we're taking has nothing to do with science. Lollapalooza, Cubs games, concerts, football games. You all have the power to recognize this for what it is. It is certainly not science. Common sense is calling out, this doesn't add up, it doesn't make sense. There are other districts standing up.
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended.
If I could just take one more quick second, one quick second. I hope that my peers know that I'm here to support their freedoms, that they might not agree with vaccination or not vaccination, but we have the choice. Please let me just have one second.
We have to keep to the limit of the three minutes, otherwise we have all sorts of people that will, thank you.
I hope that the students know that I didn't leave them.
Thank you. Please sit down.
And then I'm, I'm supporting their freedoms as well. Thank you.
We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report.
Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Ed and the Indian Prairie community, unfortunately, I must start my comments off with sad news. One of our students, Ms. Hannah Lund, passed away because of a traffic accident on September 18th, 2021. Hannah was a student who had a permanent and positive outlook on life and took the opportunity to celebrate whenever possible. I would ask that we have a moment of silence in remembrance of Hannah. Thank you. At the last Board of Ed meeting, I mentioned that we are looking at an option for our students to stay in school if the child is exposed to a positive case in the school. That expiration has continued and we are closer to establishing the test to stay option. This option, which is supported by the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education, will allow students who have had exposure to a positive case in our schools to remain in school if COVID tested on the first, third, fifth, and seventh day after exposure and those tests remain negative. We will most likely start this program as a pilot in a small number of our schools to make sure it can be scaled up easily in all of our buildings. I am happy to say that the positivity levels within our zip codes have been dropping. As of today, the positive level is now below 2.2% and cases per 100,000 are hovering around 100. This does not mean we are out of the woods, but it means things are moving in the right direction and we hope this trend continues and people continue doing their, their, their practices to make this happen. I want to comment about two people tonight and their departments for the work they have done recently. One is Mr. Ron Johnson, Director of Support Operations. He oversees transportation and food services. I applaud Mr. Johnson for the work he does daily to ensure we have buses. He is on calls at 4:00 AM to review where we are with bus routes and how many bus drivers are not working. Along with Mr. Johnson, I want to commend all the bus drivers who are coming in day and out, day in and day out. They are covering runs and making sure our children are arriving to school. There are national issues related to finding bus drivers. We saw recently what happened when a district near us had the need to go to remote learning at their secondary level due to a lack of drivers. Mr. Johnson and our bus drivers are making it happen for us here in Indian Prairie and we're very happy about that. The second person I want to commend as well as her department is Ms. Linda Herwalt and all of our nurses. Ms. Herwalt is our coordinating nurse and works tirelessly to ensure we have coverage for our nurses. Our nurses are doing a lot with contact tracing and covering for each other. The other day, we had seven nurses out and through innovative thinking, all schools were covered. I thank all of our nurses for all what they do each day to keep our children safe and healthy. I echo what Mr. Shipley said earlier about the need for people to apply for positions, including substitute positions, lunch supervisors, recess supervisors. These positions we have and we really would want people to apply for them. Finally, tonight I want to give two awards to people tonight. Both people demonstrate leadership in the non-paid work they do as members of the board. Ms. Susan Demming is a new master board member and Mr. Mark Rising is master board member maintain. These awards are due to the training they have done over time through the Illinois Association of School Boards and their commitment to the demonstrating through their work, their mastery of the learning. So if I could give out these awards now. Ladies first, Mr. Rising.
This is a bigger deal, actually.
And yours is a certificate?
There's a certificate when you've been doing it for a long time. The longer you do it, it gets smaller.
Ms. Donahue, back to you.
Okay, congratulations, both of you. Our next item is our consent agenda items. Please identify yourself as you make a motion or second. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through I.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through I.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Jeannie, please take the roll.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Karubis.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget as presented.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2022 budget as presented.
Ms. Demming, I second. Any discussion?
I think we voted on it already.
No, we voted to end the public hearing.
Okay, Jeannie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Karubis.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the purchase of copiers and associated maintenance contracts as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of copiers and associate maintenance contracts as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Jeannie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Karubis.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Aye.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. All right, next up is our discussion items and we have a communications update presented by Lisa Berry, Greg Gibson, and Sayida Rodriguez.
Good evening, President Donahue, board members, and Dr. Tally. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you our communications update. As you know, our work generally focuses on district goal number four, be student and community focused, and relates to world policies 810 and 812. I'm here tonight with our lead web designer and developer, Greg Gibson, and Assistant Director of Community Relations, Sayda Rodriguez. We also have our media communications producer, Clayton Urbannick, who you see behind us and is at each board meeting managing the live stream on YouTube.
We never see his head, just his head.
We'd like to start with our communications dashboard, which gives an overview of how our communications channels performed in the 2020-2021 school year. We recognize that there are anomalies in these numbers due to remote learning last year and people looking for information in different ways. Our website had 6.25 million visits last year, up from 5.5 million visits in the 2019-2020 school year. Our mobile app had 1,500 new downloads for a total of almost 30,000 downloads to date. You'll hear more on our website from Greg in a few minutes. Our Twitter followers has increased slightly and we are likely close to our saturation point at 17,600 followers as we currently have just over 16,000 families in the district. We are excited about the significant growth over the past year in our video views. Unfortunately, we were only able to produce one Explore Tool 4 video last year due to remote learning. However, in addition to board meetings, we produced 44 new videos, which included parent university webinars, IPEF A+ awards, explainer videos related to health and safety during the transition to hybrid learning, and several PD on-demand videos for staff. This video catalog resulted in over 317,000 views and over 1,650 new subscribers to our YouTube channel. This chart shows our video view growth as well as our YouTube subscribers over the past four years. Again, we are excited about the tremendous growth in our video views and happy to say we exceeded 5,000 subscribers to our YouTube channel in August. We have several initiatives planned for the 2021-2022 school year, starting with the school spotlight videos. After returning to full in-person learning this year, we think it's a great time to highlight each of our schools and share what makes them unique. We plan to start releasing these videos after winter break and hope it will provide a positive introduction to schools for families who are new to the district or for students transitioning from elementary to middle school or middle to high school. As you know, we've implemented our board communications committee this year. A special thanks to board members Jane and Rising for your support and feedback on projects such as the website redesign. We look forward to a continued collaboration as we move through other initiatives this year, which we'll go into in more detail on the following slides. Those include the communication survey, an implementation of our upgraded mass communication system through Blackboard Connect, community engagement, communication support for health and safety, the website redesign implementation across each of our school sites, and continued support for our students through various community relations activities. We'd like to take a few minutes to share some of the highlights from our recent communication survey. We received 1,300 responses across all 34 buildings from parents and students ranging from preschool through steps. We are happy with these results because it gives a good cross-section of our district at all levels. We received feedback on both school and district communications. The results of the school communications portion of the survey will be shared with the principals of each school. Tonight, we will focus on the district communications feedback. In addition to the questions we asked, we also received 421 open-ended feedback answers. The survey results showed that email is the main source of communication for nearly all district families, with almost 96% choosing this option, followed by the website at almost 28%. When asked for their preferred method of communication, respondents gave similar answers again, with just over 95% choosing email and just over 28% choosing website. Text messages for emergencies, as well as general information and reminders, ranked high with parents choosing these options at almost 40% and 32% respectively. Generally, survey respondents are happy with our communications, with over 73% saying they either agree or strongly agree with the statement, "I am satisfied with the communications I receive from the district." However, there's always room for improvement, with approximately 18% having neutral However, there's always room for improvement, with approximately 18% having a neutral opinion and under 9% saying they disagree or strongly disagree with this statement. For our community watching tonight, a summary of the survey results can be found at the link on these slides, and this presentation is available in board docs. We received valuable feedback from the survey, and we are already working on implementation of several suggested items. In anticipation of the text messaging preference, I've been working with the district's chief technology officer, Rod Mack, on an upgrade to our Blackboard communication system. In addition to the text messaging functionality, the upgrade will allow us to provide translated messages to families in their chosen language. Based on the feedback from the survey, we've also started adding a district contact to emails and website news articles, so people know who to contact with questions on a particular topic. Another area of feedback focused on parents' inability to find information or to locate answers to common questions. Starting tomorrow, we will be implementing our Tuesday tips, which will be a helpful hint tweeted on Tuesdays and included in the Wednesday upcoming events emails. Some examples of Tuesday tips might be where to go if you have a concern, or how to submit your child's health forms. All Tuesday tips will be archived on the website and act as a resource for parents. We will continue to evaluate the feedback from the survey and see where we can make additional changes and improvements based on the responses we received. Moving on to community engagement, this work supports district goal number four. These community engagement opportunities include the boundary process that has been ongoing since July and will conclude in December. Our listen and learn sessions will begin October 4th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Fisher Middle School, with an additional sessions being held on November 4th at Granger Middle School and December 14th at Crone Middle School. And our strategic planning process will take place second semester, starting in January. The communications department will support these initiatives by raising awareness and keeping the community informed, maintaining an active and updated web presence, and implementing the event logistics for each of the corresponding events. And with that, I'll turn it over to Greg for a website update.
Thanks, Lisa. As Lisa mentioned earlier, web visits to our district site in 2020-21 totaled about 6.25 million. Those numbers had stabilized below 6 million several years ago, and then last year, visits to our main district site and our staff website both spiked by about 20%. The health and safety support we provided at these sites was a big driver of that. Our COVID dashboard page, which we launched last October, received nearly 100,000 hits on its own. By contrast, our school site visits last year dropped by about the same percentage. With the return of in-person learning and building events, those school numbers have bounced back this year, and the district numbers have settled down a bit. Last year, we mentioned we were planning a new version of our district website. We launched it this summer. Our goals were to make a site that's faster, easier to read, better-looking than before, and future-proof for accessibility. We designed the site based on usage and search data and interviews with the content creators and users. We finally went live with it after consulting with our newly-formed communications committee. Our new site is modular. It allows us to prioritize important topics as those shift throughout the year. Like, that's why you'll see boundaries at the top middle of the site right now. Because videos have also become an increasingly important video for communication, we're featuring them more prominently than before. One topic I think I bring up just about every time we meet with you all is accessibility. Our previous website met all the federal standards for accessibility already, but we wanted to go beyond our current legal obligations, so our new design already exceeds the standards that are expected to come out over the next several years. Keeping things accessible means our homepage omits some bells and whistles, like the animations and rotating images that you might see at corporate sites and even other school district sites. But we need to ensure a site that's usable for everyone, including those with vestibular, audiovisual, motor, cognitive, or other disabilities. One of the ways we help gauge accessibility is through automated testing. You can't tell you everything about a website, but it can give you a good baseline. And one of the popular tools for such testing is a piece of software by Google called Lighthouse. Lighthouse analyzes your website based on four criteria. First, site performance, which gauges how quickly the site loads on most devices. Second, accessibility for users of all abilities. Third, best practices, which is a kind of catch-all for site quality and security. And finally, SEO, which measures how easily Google can search for content at your site. Google Lighthouse rates each category on a 100-point scale. 90 or above is very good. 50 to 90 means you need improvement, and 50 or below is poor. If you're a government entity, you really want an accessibility score as close to 100 as possible. Last Thursday, I ran an audit on our site, and I decided to run one on four of our comparable districts in the area, which I'm keeping anonymous here. Here are the results from best to worst. As you can see, the top-ranked one does a decent job, two scores in the low 90s, one in the mid-80s, and another in the mid-70s. Now here's how the IPSD 204 site fared. By Lighthouse standards, we're doing about as well as we can, but still leaving four points of room for improvement. Looking at our website in comparison to our comparable districts, the file sizes of all the text and images and code at our homepage are also about a tenth the size of those sites. This means lower data usage for users who aren't on unlimited data plans, and it helps our site load in less time. We want people to find what they're looking for quickly, and a big part of that isn't just where your links are on the page, it's making those pages load fast. The nice thing about the web is that you can always adjust on the fly, and that's what we plan to do with the redesigned district site. Based on usage and feedback, like the survey, we've already started to make improvements. This year, we'll begin taking those lessons to spread this new look to all 40 or so of our other sites. Some of you may have noticed that the first of those launched today in honor of our visit tonight, the board site, board ipsd.org. Later this school year and into next, we'll be rolling out more sites, and hopefully, when we meet again, most of our school sites will have migrated to the new design. As always, I produce our websites with no special software and no outsourced work, so the costs are kept in-house. Communications liaisons at our schools are responsible for posting content, and our tech department's server and network teams are invaluable for keeping the sites hosted and running on a minimal budget. We rely heavily on the liaisons and the entire tech team, so I wanted to thank them publicly. Now here's Zaida with a community relations update.
Thanks, Greg. We are happy to bring back the Indian Prairie Parents Council Coat Drive this year. As in past years, we are currently collecting coats and winter items, which will be distributed to families through their school's social workers in early October. The drive runs through this Friday, October 1st, and donations can be made in the collection boxes at each school. We will again work with our McKinney Vento liaison, Sandy Diaz, to support our homeless families during the upcoming holidays. For Thanksgiving, families will be offered two options for a Thanksgiving meal, including a hot meal to go from Maison Subica, or a reheat meal from Casey's Foods. All meals are free of charge to the recipient families through a generous donation of complimentary meals from Maison Subica and a drastically reduced cost at Casey's, which is sponsored by the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation through the Kid Essentials Fund. We are excited about the growth we've seen in our holiday-giving program, and will be working with IPPC again this year to offer the program to support our homeless families during the winter holidays. Last year, through donations totaling over $45,000, we were able to provide support to over 200 families, and we hope to meet or exceed that target again this year. We are happy to partner with IPPC to once again offer the Teacher Appreciation Program, which offered parents the opportunity to purchase a gift card to a local business to thank a staff member for their efforts last year. As part of the program, each $25 purchase included a $20 gift card of their choice and a $5 donation to IPPC's annual school supply drive. The program ran from April 7th through the 23rd and recognized nearly 1,000 staff members. In partnership with IPPC, we raised over $18,000 to support students with back-to-school items such as school supplies, headphones, and calculators. Due to the tremendous success of the program, which included several direct donations and a large contribution from our community partner, DuPage Credit Union, we were able to add hygiene kits for homeless students to the items provided as they return to school this fall. We're very proud of this program and grateful for our partnership with IPPC to provide an opportunity for parents to celebrate staff members, make a meaningful impact for local businesses, and help support our low-income and homeless students. Finally, we continue to partner with the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation to offer support to our families in need through the Kid Essentials Fund. Since its inception in the fall of 2017, the fund has provided support to countless district 204 families in need with food, transportation, and basic necessities. We appreciate the partnership with the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation to have the opportunity to support our families in this very meaningful and impactful way. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, we will take your questions. Okay, how about Ms. Fazdick? Any comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you first. I feel like so much of this is good news, which always is welcome.
We like to bring the good news.
So thank you for bringing all that good news to us today, both in the ease of the website and the way that we're finding, you know, getting feedback from our community members. It's so important to listen. I feel like you've done a really good job of that, so thank you for giving that feedback. And the community relations part, again, that good news in ways that we're helping one another grow as a community and support one another, I feel like is really valuable for all of us to hear, so thank you for sharing that with us tonight. I did only have one question for the communications, and it had to do with the Twitter saturation. Is that something that is like a calculation that comes from outside, or is it something that you guys determined based on just the number of families? Simply because I know high school students, for example, you know, a family may have more than one high school student, each of those may follow on their own.
Right, so last year, we had 17,500 Twitter followers, and over the past year, we just went up 100, so it's probably likely the seniors rolling off and the new freshmen coming on, and, you know, we haven't had any snow days yet, so.
That's true, good point. All right, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Grover.
I wanted to echo what Ms. Fazdick said. Thank you for the communications all you do, and I like the new design of the website. It's really easy to navigate and find stuff, and important things are right there. I have one question. If you could tell us what the listen and learn sessions are?
Oh, sure. So the listen and learn sessions will be starting this coming Monday, October 4th, and Dr. Tally will be sharing with the community his goals and some information about District 204. And then from that, we'll be asking a few questions about what works well in District 204, and then what doesn't work and how could we improve that. So Dr. Tally will be talking with our community and giving them the opportunity to provide their feedback and having a bit of a dialogue on each of those questions.
So community members can come and attend these sessions?
Community members are welcome to attend. We do have an RSVP link on our website, and I'm happy to say we already have over 100 people planning to attend, so we're excited that that many people are planning to come out and join the session. But yes, all community members are welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Rising.
So, I don't have any questions, I just have thanks. First of all, you know, as many people in the community know, when the board gets this information, we ask questions, and I asked our comparable schools that will remain nameless, but they are ones that we normally compare to, so I appreciate you sharing that with the board and how we compare to other websites or the districts that we normally compare ourselves to. If you could go to slide, the community, the one that Ms. Rodriguez just talked about, what was that, the slide? Yeah, thank you. First of all, Ms. Rodriguez, and prior to Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Berry, and prior to Ms. Berry, Jason, who held that position, the things that we do in the community are absolutely phenomenal. And not taking anything away from Teacher Appreciation or Kids Essential Fund, what we do with the coat drive, the Thanksgiving meals, and holiday support, and as a person who received that when I was a kid, those three things, I cannot begin to tell you how much of an impact. And for kids that are struggling during the holidays and don't have coats to wear or holiday meals or presents, it makes such an impact on our community. I would encourage our community to continue to donate towards that, because it does make a big difference. And then if you could go to slide two. So, and I apologize because Ms. Grover had to deal with me last week with my fun trivia facts. So, just looking at this, I wanted to share some information with you, since I have been on school board and where we have come compared to now. Video views, where are we at? 317,000 video views. When I got on school board, we had 8,500 video views, and now we are at 317,000. Twitter, we have 17,600 followers. When I got on school board, we had 490 followers. Website visits, we are up to 6.25 million. When I got on board, we had 2.9, so that's almost tripled. And then mobile apps, well, Greg, we had no mobile app when I got on board, so thank you for developing that and giving us a wonderful mobile app, and I just thought I'd share that with the community. So thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you. I won't comment on your time on the school board, but I will comment on the coat drive, and we were very happy to bring it back this year, as we were not able to have it last year, so we're super pleased about that.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Carubis.
I would like to award a point to Lisa for not commenting on Mark's 10. Thanks, you guys do a great job here.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Demming.
Thank you very much, it was a great presentation. I really appreciated the opportunity for, I love the modular portion, and as you indicated, I mean, that is just fantastic, because, you know, I had chatted with you, Ms. Berry, often, as well as Dr. Tally, about our, just about the maneuverability and people to find information, so I really, really appreciate that. And I so appreciate the point that you make regarding, you know, the sensory concerns, because I had not, I just have to admit, I had not thought about that. And I'm thinking, oh my gosh, why aren't we, you know, why aren't I seeing this color? So I appreciate that, because you have helped remind me and edify me of just, you know, inclusiveness and that recognition. So as soon as you said that, it's like, duh, that makes so much sense. So thank you for that sensitivity and that sensibility of designing our website for everyone in our district.
Well, hopefully that makes it better for everybody who uses it, and not just anybody who might need something special from it, so.
Exactly, so really thank you for that sensitivity to be inclusive of our entire district.
Thanks.
Ms. Jane.
Again, I'm not going to say anything new. You guys already have heard from me about how much I appreciate the work you do. I think what most people don't see is the immense amount of work you guys did dissecting that data to come up with the website that you did, Greg. When you explained that to us during the committee, only then I truly appreciated how much work you put in to really make it look so clean and simple. That's what we see, but we don't know what went on in the background to create that. And when you explained the whole accessibility aspect of it, because we now live in the world where we want the bells and whistles, right? Information is connected to videos and pictures and gifs and animations and all the things that you talked about. But at the end of the day, the community just wants information, right? And what you did with the websites, all of you, was made that easily findable, researchable, and accessible. So I just want to echo what everyone said, but truly what Susan just hit on is really just so outstanding. As someone who works in the field of communication, I can't, I can't say that enough, what an incredible achievement that is. And it looks so easy, but it's not. The other thing I wanted to mention was Ms. Berry's attention to giving information to the public in a time-sensitive manner, particularly with your frequently asked questions that you developed for not just the COVID dashboard, but also with the boundary discussions. Seeing that the community needed more answers and responding accordingly by creating those, I don't know if the public has gotten a chance to look at that, but I urge you, because sometimes there are comments that I hear that, oh, I didn't know that, why aren't they sharing that information with me? they sharing that information with me, or are they purposefully keeping that from us? And I think what these FAQs do is really kind of clarify that. And so I appreciate that you've created that, and.
Well, thank you. I can take all the credit, because it is a group effort of many people putting those together, but we do hope that they answer the community's questions, and certainly, you know, if the community has other questions that are not answered there, we'd be happy to look at those as well.
Thank you. And the last thing that I wanted to comment on, because it really resonated with me when we had our committee meeting, was your whole philosophy and thinking behind really highlighting the greatness of our district. I don't know if you could speak to that, as you talked about the spotlight portion, but if you could speak to that.
Sure. I think the school spotlight videos were one of the ideas that came out of just, you know, the last 18 months has been really challenging for our students, our staff, teachers, and I think moving into this year, we all just need a little positivity. So we are really looking to see where and how we can promote positivity as much as possible, and that was, like I said, one of the ideas that centered around the school spotlight videos. So we definitely want to see good stories, and any students or families that have great stories about their students or their teachers, schools, we would love to see them and help showcase them for you.
Thank you. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for all of your work. I know communications is one of the hardest things to get right, and I know it was a frequent subject of conversation over the last year, for sure, during the election, so I'm really happy that we have this committee formed and the board is participating, and that you have all sorts of new initiatives to pursue in the district. The website has been phenomenal. I really was happy, I had never heard of, being a technologist myself, I had never heard of the Lighthouse program to analyze the website, so that was a new piece of learning for me, and I'm just thrilled with how well we came out when you did your audit using that tool. I'm sure that would have been thrilling to have that pop up. And I also appreciate all of the giving back to the community. This is a very giving district, and we look for ways to take care of our needy families and needy students, and can't say enough about how important that is for our district to continue to pursue. So with that, thank you very much. I, well, I will say too, following up on Ms. Grover's comment about the Listen and Learn sessions, just to be clear, those are not a boundary discussion.
No, they are not.
So I want to make sure that when people sign up, that they aren't going in with expectations, that they are going to be able to go there and discuss their thoughts on boundary concepts.
Yes.
I'll just add to this. What would have normally happened in my first year as superintendent, I would have had this Listening and Learn session to talk about what is it that we hold true in Indian Prairie? What is it that we would, we believe, makes us who we are and we would never want to get rid of? But also, any school district, there are things that people feel should change, because it's not working. So what isn't working, and what would you do to change that item? I think that conversation is very important to us as we look at the future and understand how we move forward as a school system.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all of your work.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our last two items are legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. And I'll just say, I attended, along with Dr. Tally and several other administrators, the Lend meeting to, this was the opening session for the year for Lend, and it was with all of the local representatives and senators that touch our district or other parts of the area, and just for them to give some insight on what they think is important, and then for us to share things that are issues for our district. And so this was a different format this year, where they had small breakout rooms, and they would rotate the representatives and senators into the room, and they'd give their spiel, and I know you had a few comments for them, so, yeah.
It was a great opportunity to have this face-to-face and a dialogue, really, and the results of what people had to say. Everyone really liked this avenue that we traveled to have this conversation. But I talked about some of the issues that we are dealing with, not just here in Indian Prairie, but it's all affecting all of the school districts: shortages of bus drivers, shortages of substitutes. How are we dealing with that and making changes? The issue of the vaccine and testing mandates, and how school systems are in the middle of it all. So we talked about all of those and what's going to be done to address it from the state legislature.
Yeah, and I think some of the comments are that we need those to be longer sessions next time. It was a one-hour session, so that's a lot to accomplish in one hour, so I hope in the future they make them more lengthy. So I believe Ms. Grover has some information on IASB.
Great. So IASB came out with the resolutions. It's online. They haven't come out with the paper as yet. So they have recommended adopt or do not adopt for the resolutions and belief statements. And so next session in October, we will be discussing what you all think of those, but meanwhile, if there's something that you disagree with, I think just write to me, or if you have any questions, because that way, when we do have our discussion, we don't have to discuss all of them. We can just discuss the ones you want to discuss.
Yeah, so if people have questions on a specific resolution, you want them to bring that to you, so you can research.
Right. So I can go back and research and ask them what was meant, or why the wording was the way it was, or anything like that.
Yeah. So usually, we have a very active, for the new board members, we usually have a very active discussion of those resolutions, and so we will expect to have that at the next meeting. And then, Mr. Rising, do you have something to share?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So, I was not prepared to share this. So about a month and a half ago, I received a call from Robert Friend, who's on the Executive Committee for DuPage ISB, DuPage Division, and called and asked if I would want to serve on the Executive Committee. My first response was, and if you remember, Kathy Peal served on that, if you guys remember. My first response to him was, well, I need to go back to my board and discuss it with them, because somebody may be interested in serving in that position. And his response to me was, well, this is not something you get to choose. You have been pointed out, and if you decide not to take this, we will go and look for somebody else in another school board. And I'm like, okay, then I guess I'll take it. So it was not something that I withheld from the board, but it was something that they had, the Executive Committee members got together and decided who has been around for a while, I guess, and, you know, who do we want? And I think a lot of it had to do with Kathy stepping down, right? And then, so on the agenda for the DuPage Fall Dinner Meeting, you will see that they will be asking for a vote of the slate that the Executive Committee puts forward, and my name is one of those members. There's literally no responsibility that really comes with it. It's just the Executive Committee gets together twice a year to meet to determine the agenda for the spring and fall dinner meeting. But with the blessing of my board, I will serve in that capacity, and if I hear anything, which I thought I will, but, so yeah, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
I don't think, I don't think you need our blessing. You're already.
Yes, but I'm a considerate board member, so. But, and truly, it's, you know, they probably picked me because of the work that we collectively do as a board, and how we are looked as a high-performing board, not only in DuPage County, but the state, so I have only you guys to thank for that.
Are there any other items that anyone would like to discuss?
Allison and I are still working on the Student Representative/School Board Relationship. We're working with Dr. Howard. We're working with the teachers. The students and the teachers are kind of reviewing it and seeing exactly what they want out of the process. There's great discussion from a government standpoint on it, and we're trying to take the time to let it mature so that we get it right. So it's active, and we, we're just allowing the students and teachers to go through some of it, so we'll have more to report, hopefully, but directionally, we're moving in the right direction. That's it.
As the community is very much aware, boundary discussions are taking place, and our meetings continue. Our next meeting will be in the latter part of October, so we have a little hiatus, but we do appreciate the feedback that we're receiving. Again, as a reminder, there have been no decisions made at all of what is going to be presented to the board for a decision-making process in December, but again, in November, there will be opportunities for the community specifically to have a chance to provide feedback at each of the high schools. So please stay on the lookout for that, and we do respect and are very much aware of the communication that we receive via email and those community members who come to share their thoughts and feelings with us. So thank you.
Can I make one more comment there, too? I just, I think it's important that the community knows, first of all, the board very much appreciates the work of the committee, and while we love the community feedback on the boundaries, the board has no input on that right now. That is all committee work. So I know a lot of us have attended those meetings as observers, so we see some of the things that are being developed, but it's important work that our community is doing, and thank you, Susan, for taking the lead on that.
Thank you, Mark, for that reminder, so, yes, thank you.
Well, with that.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Thanks.